Commissioner Mariano, how are you, sir?
Fantastic, thank you.
Excellent, okay. Give me one second here. All right, good afternoon, we're gonna call the meeting back to order for the Pasco County Board of County Commission meeting for August 4, 2020. I'd like to remind everybody to please silence your electronic devices and make sure you're mute your microphones. So today, there's no ordinances, there's three items on continuance. We'll proceed the procedures for rezoning, so Mr. County Attorney, please review the procedures for zonings.
Be happy to, Mr. Chairman, there are two resoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissions. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the Board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all resoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address, and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings, the law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this Board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the Board's Land Development Code.
Thank you, sir. Instead of swearing in everybody individually, what I like to do is anybody that's pre-registered to speak to any of the items on the public hearing agenda, go ahead and please rise from wherever you're located now, and the clerk will go ahead and swear you in, and then we will obviously ask per individual that speaks, if you have been sworn, just to make sure. So Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
I'm sure they all said I do. Thank you, ma'am. And we have seven public hearing items on the consent agenda, but I think before we do that, you want to go ahead and do P-13, since it's withdrawn.
Sure, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. PDD 27484 is P-13, Wesley Chapel owner, it's for a change in zoning from MF2 High Density District to MF2 Multiple Family High Density District. This item is withdrawn, and there's no further action required on the item.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hernandez, just for those, I know there are some people from home, maybe some people that were signed up to speak for P-13, no longer needed to do that, that was in reference to a de-restrict request for a de-restriction to allow apartments, that is no longer moving forward. So thank you to the applicants for withdrawing that, we appreciate that.
I do need to put the publication in record, please.
Go ahead, please.
The P-13 was published in the Tampa Bay Times, June 24, 2020, thank you.
Again, we have seven public hearings on the consent, so Ms. Hernandez, go ahead, please.
P-1, do you want to read proof of publication on P-1, thank you.
So, P-1 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on June 10, 2020.
PDD 27487, it's Seven Oaks Master Plan Unit Development District, SP Associates Limited Partnership, modification of currently approved MPUD master plan and conditions of approval. This is a request for continuance to September 8, 2020, Board of County Commissioners' meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Still got Acida wants to speak on this item.
No, you just need to take a motion on.
Yeah, I'll take a motion, okay, go ahead. Entertained a motion to continue this.
So moved.
That was motion by Commissioner Wells, a second by Commissioner Oakley to continue this item, which is P-1. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley. District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 2, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. P-2, we approve, please.
Yes, published in the Tampa Bay Times, June 24, 2020.
PDD 27489, Truman D. and Margaret J. Campbell and Truman Don Campbell, revocable trust for a change in zoning from C2 General Commercial to RMH Mobile Home District. This, the applicant has requested a continuance to the August 19 Board of County Commissioners' meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Entertain that motion, continue.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Wells, second by Commissioner Oakley, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District 5, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 2, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes 5-0, P-3, we approve.
Published in Tampa Bay Times, June 24, 2020.
PDD 20CU20, CNRV Enterprises LLC, T-Mobile Reliant Towers for 160-foot above-ground level Montpul Wireless Communications Facility in a C2 General Commercial District. The applicant has requested a continuance to September 21, 2020, Board of County Commissioners' meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Most, continue, sir?
Exactly, moved to continue.
Okay, who to continue, I need a second.
Second.
A second, a motion by Commissioner Wells to continue, a second by Commissioner Oakley, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District 1, Mariano.
Aye.
District 2, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes 5-0, moving on to P-4.
P-4 was published in the Tampa Bay Time, 24, 2020.
Thank you.
PDD 27468, Hayes Road MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District, Hayes Road Project LLC, it's a rezoning from AC Agricultural District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for 99 single-family detached units on approximately 29 acres. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Thank you, do we have anybody to speak in opposition to this item? Clerk, Madam Clerk? Do we have anybody signed up, I don't, I don't have anybody, I still need to ask.
There is nobody here to public comment.
Okay.
No one signed up.
Okay, leave on consent, P-5. We approve.
Published in the Tampa Bay Times, June 10, 2020.
PDD 27476, Arlo MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Villages of Pasadena Hills Village J. VOP Land Investments LLC, this is a rezoning from AC Agricultural District to MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow 255 single-family detached dwellings on approximately 50, 50.973 acres. Comes here with a recommendation of approval with conditions from the Pasadena Hills Planning and Policy Committee and the Planning and Development Department.
I do have somebody registered for P-4, that means we'll have to pull it off, or they pull? Okay, so we do not, do we have anybody else then, that has signed up to speak in this item?
On P-5?
Do you have anybody at the kiosk, or does anybody?
There's nobody at the, there's nobody to sign in here.
Well, that is a consent item, so I don't think they want to pull it. Okay, so nobody here to speak in opposition, leave on consent. P-6?
P-6, published in Tampa Bay Times, June 24, 2020.
PDD 27488, Anderson Richard B. Revocable Living Trust, it's a change in zoning from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to R2 Low Density Residential District. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Do we have anybody at the kiosk, or anybody signed up to speak in opposition to this item?
There is nobody here at the kiosk for public comment.
Okay, thank you, leave on consent. Next item, we approve.
P-7, published in the Tampa Bay Times, June 24, 2020.
PDD 20CU31, in the name of Grand Trinity Plaza LLC, Sun Coast Wine and Liquor for the sale of alcoholic beverages, beer, wine, and liquor, package sales only in conjunction with the operation of a liquor store in a C2 General Commercial District, comes to you with a recommendation of approval with condition from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Excellent, anybody on the kiosk are signed up to speak on this item?
There is nobody here at the kiosk for public comment.
Okay, great, thank you, leave on consent. P-8, approve, please?
Published in the Tampa Bay Times, June 24, 2020.
PDD 200650, it's a comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL 2002 Colony Road, it's a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment to future land use maps, 2-15 and Sheet 4, changing from RES3 residential 3 dwelling units per gross acre to RES6 residential 6 dwelling units per gross acre on approximately 37.77 acres of property. This comes to you, this is an actual transmittal hearing, so we are requesting that you authorize transmittal to the Department of Economic Opportunity and other reviewing agencies.
Thank you, do we have anybody at the kiosk or signed up to speak on this item?
There is nobody here at the kiosk for public comment.
And, nobody on WebEx either, okay, great, leave on consent, that does it for consent, I entertain a motion to approve that consent agenda.
Move. Two items?
Yeah, two more items.
Where did, somebody get moved?
P-10.
Oh, they, that did go, I apologize. So just P-9, then?
And P-10.
And 10.
Okay, so P-10 does not say that, it does, although, it's on the, ah.
Yeah.
We have two more, let's go back, let's do P-9 and P-10.
P-9 was published in the Tampa Bay Times, July 22, 2020.
PDD 200664, it's Cypress Creek Development of Regional Impact Development Order Amendment. It's a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners in Florida, amending the development order for the Cypress Creek Development of Regional Impact, number 2244, resolution number 09-205 to revise land use trade-off table 1, and this comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Do we have anybody in the kiosk, or anybody on WebEx that would like to speak in opposition to this item?
No one on WebEx.
There is nobody at the kiosk for public comment.
Leave on consent, P-10, which is the final consent item?
P-10 was published in the Tampa Bay Times, June 17, 2020.
PW200119, it's a resolution of Pasco County, Florida, establishing special assessment liens for certain paving assessment projects. Geneva Road, PVAS number 3274, Brand Oaks Phase 1, PVAS number 3297, authorizing and providing for the collection of special assessments for each of the named projects by the tax collector in accordance with the Uniform Method for the levy collection enforcement of non-appellorum assessments pursuant to Section 7.3632 or to statutes, and providing for an effective date, comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Thank you, anybody on the kiosk or speaking opposition to this item?
There is nobody here at the kiosk for public comment.
Seeing none, leave on consent, now entertain a motion to approve the consent.
Leave approval, all items on consent.
Motion? I have a second.
Commissioner Starkey.
That's Starkey seconding it?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Oakley, a second by Commissioner Starkey, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 2, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes 5-0, thank you so much. My kind friends, if we could, just a reminder on those items, we could take the consent and put it up on top, if it's a consent item, that would be a big help. Thank you. P-11, Madam Clerk, we approve?
Yes, we do, published in the Tampa Bay Times, June 17, 2020.
Alrighty, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Hillary Bruno, Assistant Director for Community Development, and we're here today requesting your approval for our annual action plan for program year 2020. I believe we have a PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to go through with you. We met on June 30, Marcy Esper was here, and our initial funding recommendations were presented, and now we are in our 30-day public comment period and looking to you all for that approval.
Okay. If we could, bring up our PowerPoint.
Working on it, sir.
Do we, do we need to go through the PowerPoint, or can we, has it changed from the last time?
We haven't.
Okay, so the question was, has it changed from last?
It has not changed.
Okay, I don't mind moving on.
Yeah, I would move for approval.
Well, Commissioner Starkey, hold on, please, hold on, I can ask the rest of the commissioners. Any other questions?
Can I have public?
Yeah, and I have to have public comment too, Commissioner, so give me one second. Commissioner Oakley, do you have anything, are you okay with moving on? Okay, Commissioner Mariano, you're okay? Okay, I do have to ask for public comment, is there anybody at the kiosk, or anybody signed up to speak on this item via WebEx?
There is nobody at the kiosk for this, this item.
And no one signed up on WebEx.
Okay, Commissioner Stark, if you want to go ahead and restate your motion?
I move to approve the agenda item.
Okay. Second, I have a motion to approve P-11, I mean, yes, P-11, from Commissioner Starkey, and a second by Commissioner Oakley, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 2, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes 5-0, look, you did such a great job, it went that quick.
Thank you very much, I wasn't even up here long enough to let you all know I was nervous.
Now we know. You'll be fine next time, trust me, we're easygoing, most of the time. Okay. Hello again.
Hello again.
So you're nervous? You're not nervous, I know you're never nervous. That is for 4,000 times, right?
We're among friends.
Yeah, that's right, we're amongst friends. P-12, Madam Clerk, do we approve?
Yes, published Tampa Bay Times, June 24, 2020.
All right, it's your show, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you. So there should be a PowerPoint for this item as well, but I'll start. So item P-12 is PDD 27478, it's a rezoning from ER Estate Residential District to PO1 Professional Office District under the name of Pasco Office Park. The parcel is located in South Central Pasco County, approximate, on the northwest side of Old Pasco Road, approximately 330 feet southwest of Boom Boom Drive. Owners, the owners applicants proposed to rezone, so I found out that because it was a golf course community prior to 1975, all the names of the roads are based on the actual namesakes of what they called the golfers who were very popular back then. So anyway, so there's a golfer whose nickname is Boom Boom, and that's why it was named that way. So the owners applicants proposed to rezone approximately 1.85 acres of the property in order to develop it with, in conformance with the PO1 Professional Office District standards. The surrounding area is characterized by existing residential and entitled professional office uses, so to the northeast of this parcel is the Quill Hollow MPUD, and that particular parcel, and some other parcels on the other side of Boom Boom have entitlements for 30,000 square feet of professional office and 10,000 square feet of daycare. The subject area has a future land use classification of RES6 under the Comprehensive Plan, and small-scale office development of 5 acres or less may be permitted within areas designated within that future land use, where site, where the site provides adequate buffers and is oriented to minimize impact on adjacent residential uses. So the, according to the concept plan that was submitted for the parcel, this parcel will be developed in, in combination with the parcel to the northeast. What's being proposed at this point in time, which, again, it's a concept plan, is just a few parking spaces and, and some buffering on that parcel, so there are not really any buildings being proposed on this parcel right now. And that's what I have, this comes to you with a recommendation of approval by the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission. I'm here for any questions I have. I believe there may be someone who signed up to speak on this item.
There is somebody to sign up to speak, before we move on to that, is the applicant on the line? Is the applicant on the line? No?
Paul Manuel is on.
Thank you.
Okay, please go ahead, did you have anything you would like to add? Paul? Paul? So I do have, I'm sorry, who was that?
I was muted, can you hear me, this is Paul Manuel.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
I didn't have anything to add, I agree with Denise's recommendation. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Great, so do we have any questions from the Board this time? I know there's somebody that has signed up to speak, so Paul, we may come back to you, okay? So stay on for us. Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to, we do have one person, Alan Metzger, that has signed up to speak, I don't know if Mr. Metzger is on the?
He is online and unmuted.
Okay, great, so Mr. Metzger, go ahead and your name and address for the record, sir, please?
My name is Alan Metzger, I'm at 6139 Old Pasco Road. My property is right next to the Office Park property.
And I hate to stop you, sir, have you been sworn?
Uh, no.
Okay, let's go ahead and swear again, if you don't mind, Madam Clerk, please swear, Mr. Metzger in.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, thank you, and go ahead and start us, three minutes over, please.
Well, if the drawing of the Office Park that I was sent from the county administrative office for this meeting is correct, and final, it shows no planned buildings on Parcels 2 and 3, which are heavily woodland areas as shown on, by the Southwest Florida Water Management District recent report. The original drawing showed an extra building with parking extending well into the wetlands, and I'm okay with the newest drawing, which shows 5 buildings as opposed to 6. Now, my concern though, is a statement made at the, by the developer at the July 9 Planning Meeting that they would give me generous buffer between the property at this time, which I took that to mean they plan to come back later and request additional construction once they get approval, which is similar to what happened to Quill Hollow Development, going from 300 to 400 dwellings, which you approved, and the proposed Offly Drive development near the Grove Shopping Center. And those wetlands connect to the Office Park property next to me. My request to the Commissioners is to make Parcels 2 and 3 permanently off limits to building in order to preserve the wetlands. So there is sufficient land for water runoff. By the time all the approved developments are done around the intersection of Quill Hollow, most of the property will be paved over. Of all the areas in Wesley Chapel, the Pasco Road area is a potential flood zone. I'm asking you to have some compassion on existing residents and their water problems. Even in a conversation with Public Works employees, who are going through water problems, questions, they questioned the decision to build so many complexes in an area already saturated with wetlands. So I'm asking you to take steps to protect the beautiful wetlands in Parcels 2 and 3 for any future building.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have anybody else signed up to speak?
No, no one else signed up.
Okay, Denise, if you come back up, and then I'll let the applicants answer that. But before we go with that, Parcels 2 and 3, is that, are those parcels that are already zoned, R6?
So, so basically, I think what he's discussing is that when he looked at the concept plan, there's like a Sienna 1A, Sienna 1B, and I guess this parcel is 2. Paul Manuel would probably best explain that. So the parcel we're talking about today, I guess he's calling it out as parcel 2, but it's the parcel that's before you today. And according to their concept plan, at this point in time, and again, Paul Manuel can explain that as well, the concept plan, and we do have it on a slide, and we can, it's a hidden slide, but we could show it. It does only show parking, it does not show any construction, any, a building.
So at this time, and Mr. Manuel, I'll let you go ahead and chime in in a second, but worse, but currently it's owned R6.
Currently, this particular parcel is zoned ER Estate Residential.
This was estate residential, and the one, you mentioned that, which one was zoned R6?
No, you're probably in future land use classification of RES.
RES6, okay, was RES6, okay. Paul, why don't you go ahead and jump in and answer that, and maybe go ahead and answer the citizens' question about buffering?
Well, in the concept plan, you can see here, that there was, you know, there is an attempt to stay out of the wetlands, so there is a buffer already on that side of the property, I think he resides to on the other side of the buffer, and there's not any development on that point. As far as flooding and other impacts, I mean, it, like any project, you know, this would still have to go through, you know, a stormwater review, and through development review, and swift mud for water quality, water quantity impacts, anything like that, and, you know, I don't know that there'd be any desire to necessarily mitigate wetlands and get into wetlands and destroy them either, so it does look like there's some, there's some effort here to stay out of that, those areas as well, so I don't know that, that many of the things that he's looking to accomplish wouldn't get accomplished any through, anyway, through the design and development of the project. We don't really want to be tied to anything through a zoning restriction, so that would, I would disagree with making that a, a condition of the rezoning, but maybe defer it down to when we do actually go through a development review process and develop the property further on in permitting.
Mr. Chairman.
Just go ahead, sir.
So this, what is before you is a PO1 Euclidean zoning district. There can be no conditions on it, it's what we refer to as straight rezoning, so it is what it is, the concept plan may or may not be what they develop. It's whatever could be developed in the PO1 district is what you're approving.
Right, so for the citizen's sake, just since we're, I'm sure the gentleman is listening, is that, once it goes through the site plan review, there is a process for the citizen to, and Terry, if you need to jump in, feel free to, but there is a process where the citizen can review the site plan.
That's correct.
If they have any objections at all to the site plan, if it feels gonna have a detrimental effect on the neighboring property or the wetlands, they can appeal that site plan review administratively.
They can.
Appeal it to the Board, there's a process, Terry, or Denise or Terry?
And I can explain the process, sure.
Okay, go ahead, please.
So definitely, there's gonna be a public outreach for the site plan. When the site plan is approved, the appeal can only be based on fact, technical inaccuracies that were made in approving the site plan.
Right.
It can't be based on, I don't like the building, it doesn't look nice, it has to be based on technical inaccuracies that were made in approving the site plan.
Right, right, so if there felt there was any, again, detrimental effects via flooding or something, was it done properly during the review of the site plan, they can?
If, if the allegation basically has to be that the site plan does not conform to the Land Development Code.
Correct.
Correct.
That's a quick way of saying it, right? So for the gentleman that is listening, there, there is that, that process you can undertake, which, I mean, citizens do, do all the time, so, on a regular basis. Questions from the Board, Commissioner Oakley, please?
Well, in this process, when they go, go for stormwater review, and the water's gonna be maintained on, on that property, it's not be allowed to go on the other gentleman's property, so that has to all fall in, I mean, they're not gonna let them just use wetlands, because there's, there's rules to keep them from using wetlands, so.
Right, it has to be kept on the site, correct?
Yeah, everything has to be kept on that site, so gentleman's issues about water going from this site over to his site should be controlled when, when that comes back to us on the site plan.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And the citizen that's on, that was signed up, he can reach out to development team, whoever he's been corresponding with, and ask to be kept in the loop on the site plan if and when it comes forward.
Yes, we're happy to, and when he reached out to me and asked me for the concept plan, I sent that to him as well.
There you go, okay, beautiful, thank you for corresponding with the gentleman. Any other questions, Commissioner Starkey or Mariano?
No questions.
Okay, back to the Board, I don't have anything else.
Move approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Oakley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wells. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Wells.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 2, Chairman Moore.
Aye, motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
And again, P-13 was withdrawn, and I think the gentleman might have been referring to that earlier, one of his statements about over, over off Oakley, so that's not going to be, again, an apartment complex. That does it for the regular agenda, but we do need to go back to Commissioner Starkey, under miscellaneous business. Did you have anything, ma'am?
Yes, I too want to say that was a wonderful sc-. Yes, I too want to say that was a wonderful scalloping season, and we took a lot of folks out who'd never been scalloping and had a great time, so I think the scallops were better in the Pasco section than what we had up in the northern section, so that was great. I did want to ask the board, is, and Ainsley standing nearby somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, so I sent you some pictures. I sent them to Dan Biles and Jeff Stein Snyder as well, if you want to put them on the screen. Twice, some of the residents on Lake Como Drive have tried to do the P-VAS, and twice it's failed. I sent you some pictures from last year's P-VAS attempt. You can just imagine what the road looks like this year, so we're asking to do a board-initiated P-VAS to stop the bleeding on that road. Ainsley, you want to step up and give a little history?
Good afternoon. Ainsley called at Public Works. As you said, this project failed P-VAS twice, and we will take a look at it again if this goes forward as a board-initiated project, because obviously the duration has gone on some more, but we'll take a look at it again if this goes forward.
So, so I'd like to begin the process to initiate a board-initiated P-VAS on Lake Como.
Questions from the board for the commissioner? Questions from the board for the commissioner?
Motion, we do that.
That is.
Mr. Chairman, normally, you, normally you would direct the administrator to bring back a board package for a board-initiated.
Right.
So we'll be doing that soon.
So, yeah, I guess the county minister has direction on the behalf of the commissioner. Okay, yes, sir.
Okay.
Do, does anybody have any questions on that item for the commissioner? We'll just wait till it comes back to us. Okay. Commissioner Starkey, you have anything else?
Yeah, I did notice, once again, we are approving liquor licenses, and I just wondered if we have any update on when that won't need to come to the board unless it's, unless there's an objection.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes, so there should be an amendment to the land development code moving through the system, probably LPA, I'm thinking, October, so yeah, it should be, should be wrapped up before the end of the year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, ma'am? All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.